I will call to order the August 9, 2010, meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission. Will the Secretary call? Roll, please.
Nancy Pease.
Here.
Jim Frederick.
Here.
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Isom.
Here.
John Weddleton.
Yes.
Bruce Phelps.
Here.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Perry Parks.
Here.
We have a quorum. The full commission is present and in attendance this evening. The next item on our agenda are minutes for July 19. Ms. Dean?
I believe we're going to put off accepting those minutes.
Well, I think a motion to postpone action would be in order.
Thank you. I motion to postpone the minutes for July 19 until next meeting.
And that has been seconded by Mr. Isom. Is there any objection to that motion? Hearing and seeing none, that motion is approved. Those minutes will appear on the agenda for our next meeting. Mr. Isom, would you handle disclosures, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
No.
Mr. Frederick?
Nothing new, thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Nothing.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Nothing.
Okay, Ms. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Phelps?
I guess I should at least mention this. I work for the Alaska Department of National Resources. We work closely with the Trust Land Office, the Mid-Half Authority. The Mid-Half Authority is utilizing its monies for this particular project, at least in part. So I disclose that I do have a relationship with the Mid-Half Trust Authority and to them, the Mid-Half Trust itself. There's not a direct relationship to this particular project, but I wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dean?
No.
Mr. Weddleton?
No.
And I have nothing to disclose. Also, I did not attend the public hearing, but I did listen to the minutes, all five hours and eight minutes of them, and I have read the minutes. So I am probably as well-prepared as anybody here to deal with this.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. And you've reviewed the materials that arrived in all the packets and supplements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, he reviewed the draft. Okay. The only item on our agenda this evening is Case 2010-077. A petitioner is Rural Cap, and the request is for a zoning conditional use for severe alcohol-dependent housing. The public hearing for this matter was held on July 19. The public hearing was closed. There will be no more testimony this evening. This evening's meeting is a time for the Planning Commission to discuss the matter and conduct its debate and render a decision. For those of you that were here on July 19, I want to commend you for your decorum. And I would respectfully request that you conduct yourself in the same manner you did that evening. No booing, no hissing, and no applause. Regardless of what your personal feelings are about this project, please extend us the courtesy to allow us to do our work. At the conclusion of our action this evening, the staff will explain the appeal process for proceedings such as this. So if anyone wishes to move forward with an appeal, you will fully understand what that process is. At this time, the staff will bring the commission up to speed and remind us what our task is for this evening, and then the commission will begin its work. Ms. Chambers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As your state of the public hearing has been closed for this item, and now it is up to the commission to make a deliberation. No motion has been made on this request. Any motion that is made has to be in the positive, of course, as per your regulations, and the deliberations can go from there. The last motion made was to postpone deliberation until tonight. Some items I'd like to point out to you for some points of order is, in front of you, comments received after the public hearing was closed, July 19 of 2010. As requested by the commission, the commission provided the department with a list of questions for the petitioner and the list of questions for the department to respond to. Those were posted online to vote any question of expedite communication. And the department was provided in front of you the department's response to commission questions. And we've also provided to you the response to the questions from the petitioner as well. Also provided is Fairview Community Council's response to questions and other issues as well. Those are laid on the table, as well as tonight, there was anything received up until about 5:00 tonight. At this point, the department is open to any questions, but before that, I would like to hand out two things. One is that the commission requested the petitioner provide findings of fact from their point of view. I have those, and I'd like to hand those out. Those are on behalf of the petitioner. Also, in the case that even though the department is recommending denial of this request, if the commission determines it is appropriate to approve the request, the department will be providing potential conditions of approval, and I will be handing those out now as well. The petitioner has seen them as well. Thank you.
over these two documents that have been handed out.
Madam Chair, if I may, one more item. The last morning, the commission asked that I also serve as parliamentarian for the hearing for the point of deliberations. It is perfectly appropriate during deliberations if any of the commissioners desire to accept or to incorporate any findings of fact of the petitioner on any items own in general or the department's findings of fact on any of the items in general. The items that do need specific findings on the floor are regarding anything on the park waivers, park distance waivers. Thank you.
When you're done reviewing the documents, I will entertain questions of staff before Mr. Phelps?
Can I quickly? I'm looking at the department's potential conditions of approval, and they're on this three pages here. Did the staff have the opportunity of looking at the, I guess you might say, the recommended changes in management plan elements unless filed on page seven of what I described as being the generalized packet that staff provided questions to the petitioner? I guess part of the question, too, is that I see that some of the recommendations are included in the conditions of approval, but not all. So if you could just speak to that, please.
Certainly. For the chair, condition number one on the conditions of approval funding department dated July 19, 2010, is that a notice, is that, excuse me, number two, is that all constructions and uses shall generally conform with the plans and narrative submitted, including the site plan, et cetera. That has been upheld in court, but we may have a condition stating that the uses in construction should generally conform with the plans and narrative. That would include those factors as well. So if the commission decides to make that more clear by adding any additional conditions, that is certainly acceptable. However, we would hold them to that as well inherently.
Again, were there certain conditions that were added and certain conditions that were not, and why?
For the chair, Mr. Phelps, potential conditions of approval were created prior to this narrative, but the petitioner has created, a lot of it is the same, the neighborhood survey, 24/7 contact information, any non-public hearing review, providing onsite meters. The few little things where the installing monitoring cameras at the Fairview Lions Park, that was not included as a condition of approval because, as explained in the narrative from staff in response to the questions, there are some legal issues regarding that that would have to be worked out. That's not a given. The adopting the park, you know, certainly would be an option, but not necessarily. Anything on cameras? Some additional, you know, information, they're a little more thorough in their explanation, but in general, they do match.
There was a recommendation to install an elevator. Is that picked up in the description of the plans and narrative?
Ms. Yoshimura is commenting yes. Are there any further questions of staff before?
No.
Could you push your button, Ms. Pease? There you go. Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Staff, first the point of clarification. The proposed findings were submitted by whom? Were drafted and submitted by whom? Are those proposed findings presented to us by staff or by a member of the commission?
The proposed findings of fact were presented by the petitioner at the request of the commission. They were presented, laid on the table by the department tonight. The other item has a date of July 19, the top, to the commission from myself, requiring potential conditions of approval. So those are two separate things. The other one is from the petitioner.
And then to follow up on the July 19 memorandum, which is the staff's potential conditions of approval. Item six says the petitioner shall provide 24 hours a day, seven days a week, contact Could you clarify, is that specifically a contact person who will be at Carlock Manor?
Through the chair, that is correct.
And how will this be provided to all Fairview residents? Will this be via a website and a posting? A little more specificity here might be helpful.
Through the chair, we've had that condition previously on other cases for the last decade at least, and that is done several ways. Previously, it wasn't necessarily done through a website. It can be done through a website now. Frequently, it was getting the mailing addresses from the property appraisal office. It was also going door-to-door, introducing themselves and providing the information. And the information was for the persons who would be on staff at Carlock Manor because they will be staffing 24/7. So that would enable, if there was a problem, they could reach somebody that was there on-site, who could determine whether or not it was an issue of theirs or if it was a different issue, and they would help them resolve it.
If I may, through the chair, then this wording, please tell me if this wording reflects the intent. The petitioner shall provide contact information on how to reach staff who are on-site at Carlock Manor 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
That would be acceptable?
Further questions? Apparently not. Procedurally, commissioners, we now need to decide if we're ready to move forward with a motion or if we need to spend some time doing work in the committee of the whole. I'd like to poll the commission with regard to their preference. Are we ready to move forward with a motion? I see one head shaking no. I see two saying yes and a I-don't-know. Okay, I see more yes, so I will entertain a motion. Mr. Weddleton, are you ready to make a motion?
I move to committee of the whole. I would say yes, ma'am.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there objection to moving in the committee of the whole? Okay, we have objection, so we're going to need to vote. That motion fails, so we, that means I'm ready to entertain a motion for action. Mr. Weddleton, are you back in the queue?
No, I'm out.
You're out. Ms. Pease, are you in the queue to make a motion?
Yes.
And seconded by Mr. Weddleton?
Yes.
In the matter of Resolution 2010-077, the issue of severe alcohol-dependent housing at the Carlock Manor location, I move for approval. With the conditions of approval submitted to us by staff dated July 19, 2010, with the additional clarification to condition six, that the petitioner shall provide contact information on how to reach staff who are on-site at Carlock Manor 24 hours a day, seven days a week, period. This contact information shall be available to all Fairview residents, businesses, and Fairview Community Council. And then the rest of that condition will remain as is. In addition, I wasn't sure if we had, the staff didn't seem to have covered the issue of staffing, so I wanted to add a condition 10, that staffing on-site will be a minimum of two persons 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And in addition, I wanted to propose the concept of the monitoring cameras with a live feed to, from the Fairview Lions Park to the staff center at Carlock Manor, to allow staff to respond to instances of residential, the residents' use of the park should those uses be appropriate. And I will end it there, and I'm receptive to other friendly amendments.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton, you are in the queue.
I'd like to add a few conditions to that list, and just clarification. So number 11 would be the requirement for cameras?
Yes.
Okay.
And feel free to adjust that as you see fit.
I'll add first. So at this point, it'd be 12, and it's a little bit redundant, but it says, Rural Cap shall install an elevator in the south building to provide access to the rooms on the upper floors. The elevator shall be large enough to carry a person in a gurney. Add a 13, staff must have TAM cards and other training to identify alcoholic behavior. And 14 is as much a clarification as a condition, but it's clarified that the annual recertification of residents for eligibility refers to the ceiling on income. I'd also like to add to staff's, and you brought in staff's recommendation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to add to staff's recommendation, or condition eight, to the end of that paragraph, add, "If significant concerns are not being met, the Planning and Zoning Commission may require a public hearing." And also add to that condition, "As part of the annual administrative review and the every third-year Planning and Zoning Commission review, the operator of the Carlock Manor shall include its financial statements to show adequate funding exists to meet the requirements of the management plan."
Ms. Pease, do you agree, do you accept those amendments to your motion?
I do. I would like to hear that last one about the financial requirement we read.
Okay, and I have one other small one to add there, sorry. Okay, we add, okay, so that would be like a new paragraph to eight. "As part of the annual administrative review and the every third-year Planning and Zoning Commission review, the operator of the Carlock Manor shall include its financial statements to show adequate funding exists to meet the requirements of the management plan."
Fine, thank you, I agree.
I'd like to add a 14 that I don't believe was stated yet.
No, 15.
15. I'm off. "The commission waives the park separation distance required by Anchorage ordinance 21.050.51084."
Okay, and Ms. Pease, do you concur with that proposed amendment?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Chambers?
Through the chair, I just wanted to clarify on condition number 11 on monitoring cameras to allow staff, Carlock Manor staff, to respond. The law department questioned the validity of the ability to be able to do that, and I would query whether you meant as approved, in an effort approved by the Department of Law.
Yes, I would add that language.
Do you concur, Ms.?
Yes, I do.
Weddleton? Okay. Mr. Isom?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Weddleton. What was 14? I sort of missed that one, condition 14 that you placed.
That was the annual recertification of eligibility?
That that refers to the ceiling on income. In testimony and the various statements, it seemed to be confused. And in Rural Cap's response to us, they clarified that that's what they were looking at.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair. Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, could you repeat number 15 for me?
"The commission waives the park separation distance required by..."
Thank you.
Did I get the right number?
Thank you, yes, you did.
Okay, any further amendments to the motion? Yes, ma'am. Could you turn on your microphone, please?
My question is whether or not the size of the elevator will affect, the increase in the size of the elevator, whether or not that will have a negative impact on the number of rooms available.
That was actually a response from Rural Cap, and they indicated that the elevator does...
That they can do that?
Apparently, the one that they plan now is adequate to have a gurney.
Any further amendments? All right, it's time to discuss the motion and to place findings of fact on the record. Ms. Pease, as the maker of the motion, you can go first.
Yes, Madam Chair. I would submit the, I am in agreement with the enumerated findings of fact submitted by the petitioner at our request. Important key findings among these that I wanted to highlight are that the municipality of Anchorage has witnessed a large number, more than a dozen deaths of homeless alcoholics in public places over the last year. And the mayor established a homeless leadership task force to address this issue, and specifically to reduce deaths and reduce violence to and among this population and to reduce neighborhood impacts. And this homeless leadership team unanimously recommended support of this Carlock Manor project as the initial Housing First project in Anchorage. That was a very carefully chosen, broad-spectrum leadership team. They deliberated on this, and they found this to be the best first place for the Housing First concept. In addition, we have recently, the Assembly has deliberated on this matter and found that this model of Housing First is an appropriate use in our community and that it can be made compatible under certain conditions. And we have looked at those conditions with due deliberation and found that this facility can fit compatibly into this location. Importantly, the adjoining land uses are mostly of a commercial nature, and this is an area that is in sort of a phase of redevelopment. It is not a highly touristy area, for example. The area is also currently greatly impacted by homeless in need of, we heard very lengthy and emotional and compelling testimony from the former neighborhood about... about the stress and the anguish they feel over people who are passed out in the snow in the street, or the fear they feel when someone is camped out in their carport when they arrive home after dark with their small children in tow. We know there is a need for housing for this population, and that there is already an impact from this population in this neighborhood. By providing a location for 48 people who have no home and are using the streets as their home, this is likely to reduce the impacts. We have heard and read testimony, that in other cities where this has been tried, the effect has been to reduce the amount of publicly inappropriate behavior by the actual residents, and in addition to reduce the general use of services such as sleep-off centers in the immediate vicinity. This was shown in particular in the Seattle area. One of the requirements for locating this housing that the Assembly posted in the recent ordinance was separation from neighborhood parks, or parks, period. And we heard that the 500-foot separation distance was not any scientific figure, but rather a figure arrived at, seemed to be best estimate of a reasonable separation distance. And it was left to us, the Planning and Zoning Commission, to adjust that if we saw fit. And in this case, we heard testimony that the actual distance from the main entry to the Carlock Manor to the publicly used portion of the park is over 500 feet. There's a landscaped area of the park, which is sort of a visual aesthetic part of the park that is closer to the nearest corner of the Carlock Manor property, but the actual travel distance between the used part of the parks and the entry to Carlock Manor is over 500 feet. Also wanted to talk about the concerns of pedestrian safety. There are concerns that the sidewalks might not be adequate in this area, and that this is a high vehicle infraction area, particularly with red light running at that Carlock and Fifth Avenue intersection. We asked staff to follow up on that, and they found that regarding the sidewalks and the pedestrian amenities, Carlock Street is in fact a pedestrian corridor by designation. The sidewalks around the perimeter of the property are five to six feet, and Carlock is the main entry point to this residential facility, in fact the only residential entry point. There is no direct access onto Fifth or Sixth, which are the higher speed, higher traffic bar streets. I also wanted to mention that in terms of the general intensity of use in the area, the intensity of pedestrian traffic, according to statements from the traffic engineer Bob Kneefel, is likely to be reduced because this is limited to single occupancy by 48 residents, whereas relative to the multiple occupancy in the previous hotel or other uses that might be on the site, there might be indeed more pedestrian traffic. And since these residents will not have vehicles, it is likely to reduce, probable to reduce vehicle traffic. We heard testimony that this was not the best site, and it is not our charge to determine the best site. I just may wish to add to this, but just in brief, the selection process is not part of the conditional use approval that we must do. We needed to find whether this use is compatible at this site. That was stated to us a couple of times in different cases by staff at our previous meeting. And I'll let other people make some findings too, but I also wanted to say that in terms of the benefit to the community, we again are not charged with determining economic efficiency of this use, but we are charged with helping to enact the policies of the Comprehensive Plan, which include equitable and decent housing for a variety of populations, and with efficient use of our community resources. And we have findings in our packet that to house and support chronic inebriate, living a street lifestyle is $60,000 a year. If that person were in jail, it would be in the $40,000 range. And to put a person in a Housing First project such as Carlock Manor would be $23,000. So in terms of use of community resources, this appears to be the right thing to do for economic reasons, in addition to humanitarian reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pease. Ms. Dean.
Madam Chair, I will not be supporting this motion. I agree with the Planning Department and their findings, and I also agree with the Department recommendation. Rather than read through the entire staff packet and point out all of the reasons, basically for me, it's the traffic is such a big issue at this intersection that I just, I just can't get my head around putting a whole bunch of very drunk pedestrians in the center of some of the highest red light running part of town. And that's why I'd like to leave it. Thank you.
Mr. Weddleton.
I will be supporting the motion, and since that puts me at odds with the decision by staff, I'd like to highlight a few points that I disagree with. Regarding the, that this conditional use furthers the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, the staff found that Policy 1, the land use policy map shall guide land use decisions, was not met. And I disagree with that. The recent severe alcohol-dependent housing ordinance adds this use as acceptable with conditions in the B3 commercial districts. And the proposed use is very similar in look and operation to the long-time use as a commercial hotel. Sorry. Not done yet, sorry. Trying to, trying to be brief, so.
Oh, take your time.
The staff did not find that this met Policy 58 to encourage more affordable housing. They felt this was more of a rehabilitative service than a residential project, but the severe alcohol-dependent housing ordinance leans more towards this use as a housing facility, and therefore you get the colloquial name of Housing First. As housing, this is subsidized and is affordable. The petitioner states that Carlock Manor is designed for independent living, it's not an assisted living facility, and not a nursing home. Policy 62 was actively discussed in comments. The Fairview Community Council resolution presented data that shows a high proportion of public and affordable housing units are in the area, and we saw on the map CCRC facilities with approved conditional uses on page 255 of our packet and on page 259, that subsidized assisted living exists throughout Anchorage. This map doesn't include all such facilities, and notably doesn't include facilities like the rescue mission on Tudor. The petitioner stated that Rural Cap currently operates 12 housing facilities comprising 65 units in a variety of neighborhoods. So while comments have shown emphatically that the Fairview area has a substantial amount of supported residential facilities, we find that similar facilities are spread throughout Anchorage, and that this policy, number 62, has met. Regarding pedestrian vehicle traffic and safety, we've heard that this site is located with direct pedestrian access to facilities and services that the residents are likely to take advantage of, including social services, public transit, grocery shopping, and a nearby bar. We've heard that this is a major walking route for homeless people using services in the area, and we've heard substantial and contradictory information regarding the danger to pedestrians in the area. We find that the danger to pedestrians in this location is to be similar to the level we find throughout Anchorage. Regarding the waiver for the 500-foot distance for a public park, the Fairview Lions Park, lot line to lot line as we're required to consider, is 435 feet away. However, it's separated from the site by a three-lane major road and about a block of commercial uses. The petitioner has provided an email from the Parks Director in support of the project and indicating there is an expectation that Carlock Manor would decrease conflicts in parks. The petitioner has also volunteered to adopt the park and assist in its cleanup and to visit the park every third day. Testimony shows skepticism that Carlock Manor would solve the problems associated with use of this park by chronic homeless alcoholics, but there has been no evidence that Carlock Manor would make matters worse in the adjacent parks. Regarding the location and regard rehabilitation versus residents picking up old habits, the Planning Department recommends that it is more appropriate to move this target resident population to an area less likely for the residents to walk to known areas where their old friends may congregate, on page 22 of our packet. We do not hear support for medical or social service professionals for this viewpoint. The mayor's homeless leadership team supported this location on May 4th, 2010. We have heard examples of Housing First, such as 1811 East Lake, which is just two miles from a sleep-off center. And I would reiterate that, as Commissioner Pease said, it's not a requirement for conditional use, that the use be the best possible example of that use, only that it meets the requirements, And regarding the site plan, we found that there is decreased parking that will allow for patio landscaping and will still meet the minimum parking requirements. There are numerous legal nonconformities connected with the site outlined in the letter August 13th, 2004 by Jillann Ingless of the Municipal Planning Department, page 233 of our packet. And I'll leave it there, thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Are there further comments from Commissioners? Ms. Chambers.
Madam Chair, firstly, on condition of approval, number 2, it says, "Site plan, she dated 01.01.2010, it should be July 2010." Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Frederick.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I will not be supporting the motion, and I have two primary reasons that have led me to that decision. One is that the ordinance does require 500 feet of separation to, to public parks, and requires that if we waive or reduce that separation distance, we adopt findings of fact in support of that. I've heard no facts in support of that, that suggestion that we reduce the, that requirement. Secondly, I'm concerned a little bit about the targeted tenant population of, of this facility. The applicant has, has offered that they exclude felons and, and people with a history of, documented history of violence. And certainly much has been made of, of the unfortunate deaths of, of 23 homeless folks outside in Anchorage in the last, in 2009 and 2010. I took down myself to look at the public record of the state of Alaska through Court View, which is accessible by any citizen, and looked up the folks on that list that were listed on the, on the Support Carlock Manor website with their names and dates and ages. It was relatively easy to identify most of those folks on, on Court View. Some, some I was not able to find, and a couple I was not able to separate out by, by the information given, but nevertheless, I was able to determine that of the 23 folks on that list, 15 have had documented histories of felony or violence, and some, some with both, and many with quite long lists going back decade or, or more. I'm concerned that, that given their stated intent to take the worst, quote unquote, worst offenders off the, off the street, those who use CSP the most, those who create the most public disturbances, et cetera, et cetera, that these conditions of their, of their acceptance into the, into the facility may prevent them from doing just that. So on the, on the basis of those two, I will, I will be voting no.
Okay. Did you just push your button, Ms. Yoshimura?
Hi, dear.
Okay.
I'd like to address a couple of comments that Mr. Fredericks made. I actually went on Gravitas, and I listened to the Assembly discussion about how we got to the 500 feet, and it was, I have to agree with Ms. Pease, it was purely an arbitrary decision that took place late at night. And there was comments and made regarding leaving that distance up to the Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I don't feel that that is a reason for a denial. I'd also like to address Ms. Dean's comments, and refer to some of the comments that Mr. Potter made regarding, "The traffic generated by the facility will be significantly less than previously, since none of the residences will have vehicles. Pedestrian traffic is not likely to increase significantly, as noted by the municipal traffic engineer in his review of the environmental document for this project." And I think that that's important to note. "The proposed development also improves adjacent transportation access and flow. Residents of the vehicles, like, residents of the project will not have vehicles, and that is going to be an improvement from the current site as it was used as a motel, and it also reduces density." I also believe that the aesthetics of this building will be a significant upgrade to the surrounding area, and I think it will set a good example for other property owners in the area that hopefully might work to improve their exterior facilities as well. Finally, I'd like to make a comment regarding the residents. I am not an expert in chronic inebriates, and so I believe that it is appropriate for Rural Cap to make the decisions themselves or itself in terms of who will and who will not be eligible to reside in the facility. So I will be supporting the motion as proposed by Ms. Pease, with the amendments by Ms. Pease and Mr. Weddleton.
Okay. Are there further comments by anyone that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Ms. Pease?
I just wanted to clarify in my initial comments, I was setting down the reasons for variation or variance from the 500-foot separation from the nearest park, but in case they weren't clear, I just wanted to reiterate those. The park is located over 500 feet from the sole residence entrance to the housing units. There is a four-lane major arterial road separating the Carlock Manor from the park. And the nearest portion of the park to Carlock Manor is a buffer landscaped area, it is not an area of high recreation use. The recreation use, including the children's play equipment and picnic tables, are located on the south and eastern ends of the park, which are well outside the 500-foot separation distance from Carlock Manor. And finally, as a condition of approval, we've proposed that there be continuous live-feed video cameras to let Carlock Manor staff observe whether their residents are using the park inappropriately, so that they can intervene. So those were the reasons for the variance, and again, the 500 feet was not deemed sacred nor scientific, but sort of as a benchmark guideline that we could, could consider and then vary from.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton.
Well, following that line, my comments regarding the park, I would consider it as findings as well for that waiver of the requirement. And that's the support of the Parks Director, that the petitioner has volunteered to adopt the park, and that while we heard that Carlock Manor would not solve problems with that park, we didn't really hear anything that it would make it worse either, and that satisfies some of the conditions for approval. And then it is highlighted in that ordinance specifically calls out the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at that waiver, and many ordinances that we can create waivers for don't specifically call out for us. for don't specifically call out for us to consider that, so it's reasonable for us to look at that. So anyway, those were my findings for that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Eisner?
Madam Chair, I will be supporting this, and for the reasons that my fellow commissioners have brought up, and also for the fact that in the conditions of approval, we have a yearly non-public hearing review, and that that's somewhat unusual for something of this nature. We don't do that very often, so this is going to be under a lot of scrutiny, and at those yearly reviews, I have a feeling that we'll be able to deal with Rural Cap and anybody else that is not responding to concerns that the neighborhood has. So I think this is a very important part of our conditions of approval, is this yearly review.
Last call. Any further comments from commissioners? If not, I will offer a couple. I will be supporting the motion. If I were following my heart instead of my head, I may not be, but it meets the criteria for a conditional use. Do I believe that the existence of Carlock Manor is going to reduce the number of deaths in the community next winter? Not necessarily. Do I believe that it's going to be the end-all and the be-all for solving the problems of the public inebriates in our community? Not for a heartbeat. But I do believe it's a place to start. Is this the ideal location? No, but this is the location that we have been presented with in a bona fide application. It has been evaluated against the criteria for a conditional use application, and we have determined, at least for some of us, that it meets that criteria. If it is approved by the Commission, then it is the petitioner's job to make it happen in a responsible way. Because it is a conditional use, this body has jurisdiction over it for the life of the project. Anyway, I will be supporting it. Last call for any further comments, and since there's been objection noted, we need to vote with our machines. That motion, who did you miss? We'll let you vote. Would folks recast their votes? We have, let's just be patient until you make sure everybody's in the queue. Okay, can you set it up again? Well, we're going to have to set it up again. Okay, that motion passes with Ms. Dean and Mr. Frederick voting no. There are appeal rights, and I will ask staff to explain, Ms. Chambers or Mr. Weaver, will one of you explain to the audience what, when the appeal clock starts running and the appeal process?
Certainly, Madam Chair, the appeal, any appeal from any party agreed by this action tonight may be made to a Board of Adjustment, which is not the Assembly. It's a, if you remember, body. And the appeal period starts 20 days after the final decision has been approved of the Commission. The final decision is not, the decision is made tonight, it is the recording, basically the approval of the resolution, which records this official action of tonight. That resolution will be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to basically state earlier that this has been voted, and those were the findings of fact on the record, basically confirming it in about two months. And from that date of that official approval of the resolution, accepting the findings of fact that were made tonight, the 20-day period will start, and filing of the appeal can be made at the Municipal Clerk's Office, which is on the second floor of City Hall Building. Thank you.
Mr. Weddellton, are you back in the queue for some reason?
Briefly, if I'm allowed, just to make a comment.
Okay.
And, you know, one thing that I noted in public testimony from people who were opposed to this is that there was a sense that you were being called NIMBYs. And in my reading of the comments throughout, was that the people in Fairview did not come across to me as NIMBYs at all. I think you made a very strong case, your Fairview Community Council's comments were very important, very thorough, and I would say my reading of Fairview's attitude towards all this is actually are very compassionate to this group, even those who oppose this particular project. So thanks for your participation.
Okay. And I would like to just offer a comment, if there's anyone here from the Mental Health Trust. I can't think of a better cause for the Mental Health Trust to be looking at, or the Heritage Land Bank, or some of these other public landowners, and look, especially the Mental Health Trust, looking at lands that would be appropriate for facilities such as this or for housing other populations that have unique housing needs, because it's a real challenge in our community to house everyone that needs a place to live. And that's my last.
No noted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are you from the Mental Health Trust?
Jeff has a CEO of the Mental Health Trust.
Thank you for being here. Anyway, we have no further business. Does staff have any comments for this?
No, thank you.
Okay. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
I see it from Mr. Weddellton and Ms. Dean. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we're adjourned.